Well, good day, everyone. Welcome to another opportunity for a great Town Hall session. My name is Mark Johnston. I'll be your host and moderator today, and we have the great pleasure of welcoming Palladium One Mining today. We have in our midst Derek Wayrauch, who is the President and CEO of Palladium One Mining, and also the VP of Exploration. We have Neil Pettigrew. Gentlemen, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you very much for hosting us. Much appreciated.
Absolutely. We look forward to a great Q and A session as well, gentlemen. I'm going to step out of the way. I know we have a wonderful, robust presentation for our viewers today, and we do encourage everyone to let us know where you're tuning in from. And of course, please feel free to submit your questions for our guests today in the Q and A column. In the meantime, I'll step to the sidelines just in the wings. Gentlemen, off you go and look forward to a good journey.
Excellent. Well, we will be making a number of forward-looking statements throughout this presentation, so please refer to our cautionary language after the presentation. Palladium One Mining itself has a very deep leadership team. We've got about 150 years of experience in all aspects of mining, whether it be exploration, development, or production. Currently being exploration stage, we are very technically weighted with regards to geological team led by Neil Pettigrew, who's on the line with us today, as well as the board with Peter Lightfoot and Lawrence Ralston. We've also most recently added Gord Mars as a metallurgical consultant to assist us with optimizing the metallurgical recovery for the assets that we do have. All right, this computer. The company itself is very much exploration stage. We are listed on the Toronto Venture Exchange as well as the OTC QB, and we're very much focused on being good stewards of ESG and not just being using ESG as a marketing tool, but actually making it something substantive in our culture. So we are focused on discovering and delivering metals that are both environmentally and socially conscious and which will assist in the net global reduction of greenhouse gases. We currently have a market capitalization of around $50 million, enterprise value just under $40 million with healthy treasury. As at the beginning of August, the last reported cash balance was $15 million. So we're extremely well-funded for our planned activities as we move forward, and we have independent research coverage from two institutional houses, both being Sprott Capital Partners and Research Capital. Like so many companies that are in the exploration stage, this year has been an interesting one, and certainly since the beginning of June, the market prices have come off quite dramatically across the board. You know, we are pleased that we still are ahead of the pack. As you can see on the right-hand side of this chart, our share price has come down roughly 20%. We still are leading the GDXJ and our peers, but in this period of time, we've had a number of very good news releases. We've had the addition of research coverage. We've expanded the targets that we have with increased size of our chargeability anomalies in Finland. And as well, we've added a resource that's effectively doubled our resource endowment in Finland earlier this month. And just last week, we announced the highest-grade intercept to date at our project in Finland. So all things equal, I think the company and its thesis is moving ahead very swiftly and nicely, unfortunately, in the backdrop of a market that isn't completely constructive right now. Fortunately, we are well-funded and not looking for any additional liquidity at this time. From an investment highlights perspective, I think it's important for stakeholders to consider the fact that with Palladium One, you are getting exposure to both industrial precious and the battery metals complex. As you can see on the chart, one can easily argue with the PG endowment that we do have that roughly 50% of our metal endowment is precious metals. The other 50% is battery metals. But given the PGEs or platinum group metals are also used in the electric vehicles, virtually 100% of our current metal endowment is related to the electrification of transportation. In Finland, our LK or Latina Kalisma project is our flagship project, and we believe it's one of the largest palladium dominant projects of its type in the first world. Palladium, for the most part, about 80% is actually mined, produced in South Africa and Russia, two jurisdictions with a very different risk profile than what we have in the EU with Finland. And our existing resources that underpin our valuation, we have about almost 600,000 ounces palladium equivalent in the indicated category and about 1.7 million ounces palladium equivalent in the inferred category. So quite a nice endowment. And this is really, however, very much of an interim step. We will be generating a new resource for the Kakuua area, an NI4311 compliant resource, just like the existing resources in and around the year-end, possibly into Q1 of 2022, and it's expected to materially increase our resource endowment. And that's really what we want to get at with this presentation and give you an idea of what we are looking at as management with regards to how this company is unfolding and we're adding to our endowment and value for our shareholders. In addition to the resource we will be bringing out, there are numerous untested drill targets. You know, in particular, we have about 38 kilometers or roughly 20, 25 miles worth of basal contact or marginal contact with numerous untested targets that will require follow-up. So we plan on remaining very much focused on increasing our endowment and being an exploration company at this point in time, even though it can be argued that we perhaps have our sights very much set on the critical mass needed for a credible mining scenario. For those that are not familiar with Finland, it should be pointed out that it's an absolutely excellent jurisdiction with a very robust mining and development legal framework. Infrastructure is fantastic. You know, we can even get our drillers to WhatsApp us photos of the drill corps as it's coming out of the drill rig, simply because the wireless network is so good. So, you know, you have advantages like that. We have roads, there's very cheap power, low income tax rate, and extremely skilled labor force. But in addition to what we have going on in Finland, we have the Tyco Copper Nickel Project in Ontario. It's a very high-grade nickel sulfide discovery, so very much a battery metals project, where at the end of last year, we had a discovery with up to approximately 10% nickel equivalent at surface and approximately 3.8 meter strike length, or rather thickness. We've now traced that mineralization over 350 meters, and we're looking to find the source of it and expand that. But it's only part of the story. The other part of the story is that Tyco is a very large property package that's woefully underexplored, and we have a lot of grassroots work to do there to continue to expand the endowment. Looking forward in terms of catalysts for the company and the way we're thinking about things, as I mentioned, we do have a resource coming up in approximately Q1 of next year. We are actively also conducting metallurgical work to de-risk the project as well as starting baseline environmental work, all in advance of potentially preparing a preliminary economic assessment sometime next year, which will be dependent, obviously, on ongoing exploration results. Now, I'll skip Canada for now. We'll come back to that in more detail later. In Finland, we really have two projects. So on the top left of this image, you can see the Latina Kalisma or LK project. It looks fairly small, but we have zoomed out on a country scale here. It's about 13,000 hectares of property, and what we're chasing there is disseminated sulfide mineralization, and it's at LK where we have our two existing resources. And, you know, there are similarities between the platree type deposits of the Bushfeld in South Africa. But again, I'll remind you that this is in the EU in a very good jurisdiction. Our Konstant Jarvier KS project, which adjoins LK, hosts the western third, if you will, of a feeder dyke or really large garden hose that contained a massive magma flow previously. And here we have a very high-grade massive sulfide target that could have some very meaningful values. It is, however, a much higher risk project than what we have at LK, and as a result of that, we have been focused at advancing LK prior to KS. But we do anticipate initiating some work on that in the next year. And the KS project would be akin to or have similarities to a Naurils-style mineralization or Voisey's Bay for those that are familiar with the fantastic nickel deposits that they have there. Zooming into the LK project, what we have here in the background are the various rock types outlined in yellow and orange and red are the property borders that we have, and the different colors represent the different forms of land tenure. Importantly, in the blue hashed lines are the locations of the various geophysical or IP chargeability surveys that we conducted last year and earlier this year in order to define drill targets. Up at the top of the image, you can see at the Kakuua area, we have quite a wide section there. It's roughly 10 kilometers in size. That's really the area of our focus, Kakuua and what we're calling Kakuua South, where we have in total a seven-kilometer chargeability anomaly, which we have been actively drilling. And I'll explain more details on that on the next slide. Down in the southern part of the property, about 17 kilometers away from Kakuua is the Hakiaho Zone. We just announced, as I mentioned earlier this month, a resource there with 1.2 million ounces palladium equivalent. It covers three kilometers of a 17-kilometer strike length. And as you can see from the image, we have extensive IP surveys to the east of the Hakiaho Resource Zone, and we anticipate with fairly limited drill budget, we would be able to substantially increase that resource endowment. But over the full 17 kilometers, we know that trend is mineralized based on historical work that Otto Kappu and the Finnish Geological Survey have done. And our job at this Hakiaho trend and even at Kakuua is really to use the geophysics techniques that work very well to point the drill bit and focus in on building out tonnage where we have higher pods of or higher grade pods of mineralization, hence the work we're doing at Kakuua. Zooming into the Kakuua area, you can see on the top right-hand side here, the seven kilometers of anomaly that we have in the various brown and yellow colors. The main image shows the existing resource in the yellow outline, which is our existing pit with roughly 1 million ounces palladium equivalent, split 50/50 between indicated and inferred. This whole area south of the pit and the seven kilometers was discovered within the last year, and the focus of our drilling over the last year has been inside the red outline and where we have completed our drilling program, and that is the area with that we anticipate bringing into resource category in Q1 of next year. The exact size is obviously still unknown. We have over 50 drill hole results still to be received from the labs. As you may know from other exploration companies, there's been a lot of activity in the space, and drill results have been coming very slowly. So they will be coming in over the coming weeks and months, and we'll be putting those into the market. So quite a backlog of news flow, but you can eyeball the expectation that we have. You know, Kakuua itself inside that yellow, it's about one kilometer east-west and has roughly 1 million ounces, and we're hoping for several multiples of that in this Kakuua South and Kakuua area. In addition to that focus area, most recently in July, we announced the discovery of additional chargeability anomalies, which is a big bullseye on the western side of the image here. You can see in the inset, another bullseye on the right side. These are two target areas that we are going to be drilling as well, and given their intensity could be quite interesting and perhaps increase the ounces and the opportunity for us. Our main focus, however, is the one on the east because it correlates very well with the magnetic surveys we did and is relatively consistent to the other areas where we've had success. So that drilling needs to be completed and come into the market as well. But currently at Kakuua, we have roughly 22 million tons of resource endowment in this greater Kakuua area. We are targeting 100 million tons of endowment, so quite an increase from where we are now. One of the things we did discover earlier this year as well, back in May-June timeframe, was that although we had been focused on the lower zone of higher-grade mineralization, where the there's a contact, the intrusive has contacted with the basement, we uncovered that there is a layering effect, if you will. There's, we actually have an upper and a lower zone of mineralization. And this is really important because when we were initially drilling, our plan was to stay fairly shallow and perhaps define a resource that would have a maximum open pit depth of around 200 meters. Given this upper zone of mineralization is carrying some reasonable grade and may not drive the economics of the project, but certainly reduce the cost of waste stripping, it allows us to take the pit opportunity deeper. So we've now stepped back, as you can see on this image with these two holes here, number 80, 81, and 98. And we're now targeting a 300-meter-deep pit resource as part of the work that we are conducting for year-end. So while the lower zone will drive economics, this is fantastic. And as you can see on the left image, it appears that certainly in some sections that the mineralization is getting much higher grade. We've got over four gram material, over 24 meters, and inside of a unit with about 112 meters of two gram material, so extremely robust, appears to be thickening, and we hope that that continues. This image here is again the the insets of those chargeability anomalies up at the top, and we've broken them up a little bit for easier viewing. But what I want to draw your attention to specifically is this long section that we have on the bottom image. You can see it from the inset on the bottom left exactly what area this relates to. And here you can see that we've got two higher-grade zones, almost pulses of mineralization, if you will, that exist. We've seen the same thing in Kakuua. And, you know, the other big takeaway is that there are tremendous amount of drill results that are pending. We are very backlogged due to the assay turnaround times that we are experiencing. So we are looking at doing a lot of filling in these areas and trying to expand and refine those higher-grade zones of mineralization, which certainly from a mining perspective allow the opportunity to maximize MPV by defining a particular mining sequence. Stepping back a little bit to the initial resource and the current resource at the Kakuua Zone, as you can see here, the mineral in the section on the right-hand side, the mineralization comes to surface. We have a pit outline that goes down to about 275 meters. We knew at the time that it would probably pull deeper, but there wasn't enough data to support it. So we've been working on drilling that, as you saw on the prior image. But importantly, the waste-to-ore ratio here is only three to one, or the strip ratio is three to one, which is suggestive of a low-cost mining opportunity. And, you know, we've been very pleased by that, and it's part of the reason we've been focusing in on this area, not only because this area of the property has elevated PGEs or platinum group metals. As you can see in the resource table at the bottom, most of the economics are related to the PGEs, which are comprised of the palladium, platinum, and gold, and in the indicated category have a grade of about 1.2 grams per ton, in addition to the inferred resources that we have at slightly less than one gram per ton. But in addition to that, we have both nickel and copper credits for our endowment. Flipping over to the Hakiaho resource, the style of mineralization here is a little bit different. And this is the resource that we put in a couple of weeks ago. It's 1.2 million ounces. The strip ratio is actually better than what we're seeing in Kakuua. It's only one to one strip, so a very shallow pit. It's quite, quite long. It's three kilometers in length, as I mentioned, can increase perhaps by at least another two kilometers based on the historic drilling that we need to do some more infill work on. And as you can see, we have various cutoff grades shown here, so you can pick your poison with regards to what cutoff grade you want. But from a base case perspective, we have elected a $25 NSR per ton value, which is giving us approximately 1.2 million ounces at about 1.15 grams per ton palladium equivalent. Importantly, with any polymetallic project is the metallurgical work and making sure that you can actually recover the metals out of the rock. So we're very fortunate that there has been some very good work done by SGS in the past. The most recent program was done in 2010. And what it demonstrated is that a very saleable bulk flotation concentrate could be produced with grades running between 16 and 17% nickel and copper. There are no deleterious elements. The MGOs were kept well below 4%, so no anticipation of smelter penalties. As well, the final mass pull of the concentrate was quite economic and easy to ship. It was only around 1.6%. Now, this is all preliminary work, and we from that work, we also had some, you know, very good rougher recoveries. So you can see on the bottom left-hand side, the palladium-platinum recovery, 86, 72%, copper 95, et cetera. And, you know, that is what one would expect for these projects. The work at the time did not include optimization of the cleaner stages of the project, and that is something that we are focused in on. And as a result of that, we've shipped another metric ton of material to SGS Lakefield here in Ontario, Canada, for the, what we're calling the Phase Two testing, where we're going to be looking at the various characteristics of the feed, the concentrates, the tailings, et cetera. And we'll also be doing a closed-circuit testing to simulate actual plant recoveries. Prior test work was done in open circuits, so not quite representative. And with that work, we will be testing the various lithologies or rock types that make up the resource and assessing whether or not it is possible to produce two products, not just a bulk flotation concentrate, but also perhaps a copper concentrate and a nickel concentrate. And then we can do the trade-off studies to determine what would be the most economic for the company. So that work is well underway, and we are hopeful that we'll be able to conclude that work towards the end of this year. Skipping over to the KS project, here you can see the gravity and magnetic anomalies that are at a regional scale that this project generates. It's quite significant. And based on the metal tenors at 100% sulfides that we're seeing at LK, when you calculate things at 100% sulfide basis, you're almost three ounces per ton of precious metals, 10% nickel, 13% copper. So, you know, very high metal tenor. And the opportunity here at KS is, you know, logically, it is the emplacement path for LK. And if we can find a unit with 10, 20% sulfides, it could be extremely high-value rock. Obviously, it's going to be deeper, and hence it's higher risk. But it is something we are going to start advancing, and we are currently seeking quotes for the first round of geophysical work for next year. And again, you know, the analog here or potential analog would be the eastern deeps portion, the connecting dyke, if you will, of Voisey's Bay or Naurils-style mineralization. With that, I'll flip over to Canada. So at our Tyco project, it is about 55 kilometers northwest of Marathon, Ontario, or northeast, I should say, and northeast of Lake Superior. It's a very large land package, about 25,000 hectares inside. And again, it's in an area that has been incredibly underexplored. Even the Ontario Geological Survey hasn't done complete mapping or surveying in this area. So it is very much an early-stage grassroots project. And, but it does also possess some interesting showings. So historically, at the RJ and Tyco zone that you can see on the western side of the image here, there are nickel, the copper intercepts with over 1% sulfide nickel. 17 kilometers to the east at Smoke Lake is where we have our very high-grade sulfide nickel discovery. We also have copper showings up at the Bulldozer and Chabotik as well. So, you know, based on the smoke, if you will, of this project, we did run a 3100 line kilometer VTEM survey this summer to help us refine additional drill targets for follow-up. And the results of that are still being processed, and we hope to get those results from the geophysists very shortly. At the Smoke Lake Zone, as you can see here, we have some extremely high interest grade intercepts, over 350 meter of strike length. And for those that are not absolutely familiar with how these equivalency calculations work, so for example, the 9.9% nickel equivalent is has roughly 218 pounds per ton would be the grade, and that would be equivalent to roughly 30 grams per ton gold equivalent or 23% copper. So extremely high grades as you're looking at other opportunities. The challenge here is to find the source of the mineralization and or the path of mineralization and to expand it to get sufficient tons. But you can see down in the image at the bottom of the page, it's a very, very pretty-looking rock with huge pentlandite eyes, and it's quite unique. And it's really what's attracted a lot of inbound interest to the company in recent months. What we know at Smoke Lake currently is fairly limited, and it's really in that little ellipse that you see on the left image here in yellow. It's about 150 meters around the zone where all our work has been done. There is a tremendously large inversely polarized magnetic body underneath Smoke Lake, and we are drilling geophysical platforms to test and see if we can find the source of that mineralization that we are seeing at surface, as can be seen in the section on the right-hand side. And just as a reminder, the nickel-copper ratio here is two to one, very low PG value. So this is very much a battery metals situation in, you know, fantastic jurisdiction in Ontario and in pretty close shipping distance to the smelters in Sudbury. So lots of optionality with this project. But it's earlier days, and we continue to focus in on Finland, where we can add value with the least amount of risk. So in summary, you know, we are fully funded. We think we've got a fantastic project. It's quite evident that we will be growing the size of the resource, and it's a matter of doing heavy lifting to advance the project. So with that, I will pause and I guess open it up for any questions that the viewers may have. As you know, we have Neil Pettigrew on the line, so feel free to lob in some technical questions as well.
Terrific. Derek, thank you very much for the walkthrough. Very informative and interesting, obviously, given the questions coming in from various viewers here. So we'll jump right into the Q and A session, as you mentioned. First question up, do you believe, Derek, that in Kakuua, the higher grades are in the deeper zones of KS?
So Kakuua is different from KS. So at Kakuua, we are seeing higher grades as we are going deeper in the Kakuua South Zone that we zoomed in on. At KS, I think, you know, the possibility there is that you have extremely high grades, much higher than what we anticipate seeing at Kakuua. But, you know, that's a risk that is a thesis right now. And just as when we got involved with this project two and a half years ago, we had a thesis about the scale potential at Kakuua. Now, LK, the thesis needs to be proven at KS, and that's the work that we look at starting next year.
Terrific. Thank you. Very fascinating, too, Derek, to hear about the jurisdiction in Finland. We've had the great pleasure of touring around the world with various companies, and here we are, obviously, with Ontario. But in the Finland territory, just curious about the environmental component working in that jurisdiction specifically. We've talked a little bit about the great skilled resources that you have there in terms of local people power, et cetera. How does Finland work within the greater picture on the planet when it comes to environmental work?
Well, I think when you're dealing with any first-world country, environmental concerns are top priority. And as I said earlier, you know, the ESG story isn't a marketing And as I said earlier, you know, the ESG story isn't a marketing story. It should be how you operate and the culture of the company. And certainly Finland has adopted a very high environmental standard. They have very robust regulatory framework. And you have to do things on best practices basis. That's just the way it is in, in the first world. And Finland does a fantastic job with that. They do have a couple nuances that, that you need to be thinking about. One is if you're in an area with Natura 2000 protected forests, these are areas where you cannot have any surface disturbance.
Okay.
And we don't have any of that with our LK projects, so we're not too, too worried about that. And obviously impacts of, of waterways becomes an issue as well. And fortunately, we're not seeing any, any glaring issues with that right now. But these are things that you need to de-risk as you advance a project. And as part of that effort to do the de-risking and checking the box that there are no gating issues, we have initiated this month, the first set of baseline water sampling to be able to, you know, fully understand what the risk profile might be.
Terrific. Thank you for that, Derek. You know, we had a wonderful opportunity not that long ago, fairly recent actually, in Colorado with the Precious Metals Summit to, to connect you and I. And a really fascinating conversation from your perspective around the concept right now in the industry around battery metals. And I just wondered if you could maybe share a little bit about that in terms of the, what was called the emerging market that's obviously moving at a great pace.
Yeah, no, battery metals is certainly, you know, a very thematically relevant item right now. We just saw a release from Ford yesterday that they want to transition to 100% electric vehicles by the middle of, well, 20, 2035. And then, you know, there's a couple of different types of, of electric vehicles. And I think they're part of the reality is that if everybody were to go to the pure battery electric vehicle, the Tesla, if you will, there doesn't appear to be enough metal out there to be able to satisfy that potential demand. So governments and companies are going to need to find paths to create projects, mine more in order to, to satisfy the demand. If you just take, for example, copper, the amount of copper produced globally is probably akin to what would be required just in the electric vehicle if, if everybody went that way tomorrow. Well, that doesn't allow you to have enough metal for your house construction or the charging infrastructure that's required. So I think from a desire perspective and a virtue perspective, there's, there's a lot of signaling going on. It's going to be up to a coordinated effort of industry and government to provide the, the metals required to meet those, those aspirational targets. And fortunately, you know, we have a fantastic and early stage nickel project, copper nickel project in Ontario that positions us for that. But as well in, in Finland, you know, we've got copper and nickel there as well. And as a matter of fact, at Hakkiaho, that is mainly copper and nickel from a value perspective. So I think we're very well positioned to, to, to help in, in that theme.
Great. Thank you, Derek, for that. And I certainly want to honor the fact that we have Neil Pedigro here, who is VP of Exploration. Neil, perhaps an invitation to you at this point, just to share your perspective from a geology angle about the company, the operations, the projects. What gets you excited about, about the work right now at Palladium One?
So the LK project is really the reason that I came on with Palladium One is that the LK project is a rift related intrusion. Rift related intrusions have formed some of the world's largest copper nickel PGE deposits. And real being at the top of the list, but also very similar to the geology in my backyard here in Ontario with the mid continental rift. And you have other stories like the Eagle Mine or Talon right now that's going strong. And then of course, the Marathon deposit with palladium. And so it was really the potential of the LK project to grow. And that's really what we've been doing is that when Derek and I came into this project, there was, you know, about a million ounces on the books, non-pit constrained, you know, very low grade. And that project, we were advancing significantly. And, you know, we've made significant discoveries with Kakuua South. And so that's really kind of come to fruition is that the potential to expand the known deposit at LK is really the big plus that we have here.
And if I could just add, I think, you know, there's a lot of optionality with the project as well as people that look at our resource report for Hakkiaho will realize is that we also have cobalt in our resource endowment. And we have been asking for cobalt. We have started asking for rhodium as well. And, you know, we'll be getting additional information out on, on those elements as, as time goes on. So we're very much hedging our bets, if you will, given the, the style of endowment that we have and hitting a number of thematics.
Appreciate that from both of you. Thank you very much for that perspective. Another question looking ahead, can you tell us a little bit of your thoughts of the three to five year plan here for Palladium One development or sale?
Yeah, that's the big question. And, you know, realistically, in the current environment and the stage of where we're at, our focus is really to grow the resource and stay in the exploration sphere and, and build out a resource, but also have to tick the box by de-risking it, hence the degree of metallurgical studies that we're going to be doing. Because at the end of the day, it's great to have a resource, but you still need to get it out of the rock, whether it's gold or copper, you know, whatever commodity it is. So we're working on, on that element. And we also can't schedule when somebody may want to take over the company, right? So all we can do is continue to add value, focus in on, on the knitting, as it were, and de-risk the project and perhaps somebody bites. But, you know, part of that continuum is working towards a development scenario. Hence we're adding people that have that type of experience. And we are de-risking things that a developer or ourselves, if we're a developer, would want to address or need to address.
Very good. Excellent housekeeping. Thank you very much for that. If we could take a bit more of a bird's eye view here, gentlemen, and, and look at the, all projects, all operations, a comment here that this sounds like a very awesome local story. Are you able to track shareholders from Finland?
We haven't been focusing in on the Finnish shareholders yet. There is interest. We are getting more and more Scandinavian interest from the project, especially from, from funds, actually ESG related funds that are, you know, understanding what we're trying to do here with having both the environmentally and socially conscious metals. We are operating in an area that has a fairly large degree of unemployment. And, you know, when I met with the, the local mayors there again last week, there's a huge amount of support for, for the project. And I think we just need to keep, keep focusing in on, on dealing with the, the social aspect locally. And I think naturally the investor base will come, but we will be doing more marketing certainly in, in Scandinavia.
Okay. Thank you for that. Also looking at Canada and Finland as jurisdictions, would you consider splitting the company into Canadian and Finnish companies?
It's obviously something that we get asked quite a bit. It is something that, you know, we have to keep in the back of our minds and think about. But you want, I think, from a strategic perspective, you want to split the company at the point in time when both sides are going to easily stand on their own. You wouldn't want to put undue risk on it. So it is, is something that is thought about and considered, but it's not something that we're looking at acting on today.
And without a mind, can we also look ahead? When can we expect next results? Neil?
So we did just to get some drill results out. As you can see, we've had quite a gap in the drill results side of things. And that really comes down to the labs. You know, you're, you're looking at three months or more sometimes return around. So, so now that we are starting to get our results flowing again, I think you can continue to see results, you know, coming out on, if not a weekly, bi-weekly, you know, every three weeks, that kind of stuff as results trickle in. We obviously like to batch our results out to put as much of a meaning on those as we can. And so now that we're starting to finally get them back again, we will, we'll be steadily releasing results as the time goes on.
Yeah, and we do have a huge backlog. We have over 50 holes that need to get put out into the market. So it's been rather frustrating from, from our perspective, not having a quicker turnaround. But it's, it's where we are in the cycle. And so I would think investors should anticipate a very steady stream of catalysts, whether it be the, the results from the, the drilling in Finland or the drilling in Ontario or the, or additional geophysics work, all in advance of the, the resource in Q1. So I think we're going to have a very busy six months of, of news flow once again.
Okay. Good to know. And we'll keep an eye out for that. Maybe we lean a bit more here with Neil and ask the question, what would a typical permitting timeline look like in Finland if the project eventually advances to that stage?
So you're talking about permitting for mining. That's, that's another situation. You've got to apply for the mining permit. And the beauty of Finland is they actually, you know, have laws set out and then they follow them. And so, you know, there is a period of time where you would have consultation on that and that would be granted. There, there is other things that need to be done and we have started that. We've started baseline studies on the LK project and just this late summer. And so, you know, that kind of stuff coming out, you're, you're probably looking at a couple of years to go through that permitting process. And, you know, that is something that we are going to be looking at. We're not quite at that stage yet, right? So we are still in the exploration stage, soon to have resources. You know, the next step for us is kind of PEA, right?
Okay. Good. Thank you for that. Let's move a little bit over to the cash, cash area and also the drilling component here. Question comes in, what is our cash on hand and are we well funded to complete all business and drilling for 2022? In addition, how many meters of drilling are we committed to for 2022?
So we haven't made any commitments at this point in time with regards to drilling. We need to get our assays back so we can plan the future. So we haven't done that yet, but we are reserving drill time. Last reported cash balance that we disclosed was August 1st, which was $15 million Canadian at that point in time. And that's more than sufficient to, to get us, you know, well through 2022. But it's dependent on how much drilling we actually do.
Okay. Thank you for that. Another question around the investor side, it'd be nice to attract investors in the US. I'm just curious your thoughts there.
Oh, absolutely. And we, and we do have, you know, fair amount of trading going on. It's, it would like to have more so in the US. So we are listed on the OTC QB. We are seeking a DTC registration to make it easier for US investors as well. And, you know, that it certainly is the area of focus for us. And I would say at this point in time, our shareholder base is, is for the most part institutional. You're probably, you know, 50 odd percent institutional holdings. Eric Sprott, by the way, owns the largest single stake. He has about 15% of the, of the company has been quite supportive since we, we got involved. And the, the US, I believe is around the 20% mark right now. So it's, it's growing, but we need to grow it more.
Terrific. Thank you for that. Next question, what's the estimated CapEx of the LK project?
Well, it's, it's too early to speculate on, on what that is. We haven't done the, the studies and the regulators would give us a speeding ticket if we answered or tried to answer that question, doing any work.
Well said and fair point. Thank you for that. Also, is the inbound interest, would you say more from investors or potential acquirers?
There, there's a mix that we, that we're getting. So we're getting a lot of institutional meetings. Yeah, as, as you said, we were at Beaver Creek a couple of weeks ago and we had incredibly busy schedule there, which it was an institutionally based conference. So that is, is continuing. But there's a broad mix. Our, our mailing list is, is growing every week. There's a lot of retail interest in the story. So it's, it's all over the park, all over the place, including institutions and corporates as well. And, you know, the, on the corporate side, obviously, when you have the type of grades that we've been finding in Tyco, that gets a lot of people making inbound phone calls.
Fair. Okay. Appreciate that. Next question comes up, on a macro level, do you think that the Gates investment in cobalt will bring greater investor interest to the sector overall?
I hope so. I hope so. And I think, you know, the, the theme for cobalt itself is, is the same as for nickel, sulfide nickel. It is not the latter, right? Or, or copper or the PGEs, you know, where, where is all this metal going to come from to satisfy the forecasted demand and the direction that governments are taking consumers? So yes, I think that there should be more interest and that certainly helps having, having him focused in the mining space.
Terrific. Thank you. We may finish up here as we're getting closer to the top of the hour. Another question comes in, moving around the planet a bit, will you be also making it easy for UK investors?
Well, hopefully we are. We are listed on Frankfurt. A lot of UK investors can buy there or buy on the TSXV. We don't have any plans at this point in time to list on the LSE. It's, it's an extremely expensive exchange to, to get on. And not sure that's at this point in time, the, the best use of funds for the company.
Appreciate that very much. Time for one more question here. Peter asks, when are you going to drill the bullseye geophysical targets at Kakao?
Well, that's, that's happening as we speak.
Excellent. Excellent. And, and certainly looking over to speak a bit more on the geological side as well, Neil, anything to offer about that project in particular?
Just on LK in general, I mean, the, the expansion potential, as I mentioned before. The other little bit really is the prescience of the commodity suite that we have, right? Being a polymetallic deposit, we have the battery metal and the precious metal exposure here. And there's just very few places in the world where you can have that all in one go, right? So I mean, copper nickel G or PGE rich copper nickel G deposits are a bit of a rare beast. And LK, as I mentioned, is highly prospective for this. And, and one thing that we really didn't mention is I go on about the expansion potential. We've talked about Kakuua, but Kakuua is seven kilometers of strike. We actually have 38 kilometers of favorable horizon that we control at LK. So when I talk about expansion potential, it's quite a bit beyond what we're even talking about right now. You know, we're in a target written, target rich environment. We were actually just focused in on Kakuua initially because that's where we had the highest PGEs.
Okay. Thank you for that, Neil. Appreciate that. And, and just to look ahead and wrap up towards the top of the hour here, Derek, anything you'd like to share that's come to mind for our audience that, that hasn't been spoken in this space yet?
No, I think we've covered all the, the highlights, right? We're, you know, we're well funded. We've got a lot of results coming. I think there's going to be a lot of news flow to support the stock. And, you know, it's, it's an opportunity for investors to think about whether or not they want exposure on metals that are certainly very much in demand. And, you know, you look at palladium, it's been, I believe, in a 10 year supply deficit right now. So, you know, we're quite excited by this space and can only tell our story and see if it meets the, the investor criteria.
I appreciate that very much. A very well thought and flushed out presentation for our audience as well. I want to thank everyone who's tuned in today from various parts of the world and asking questions. Neil and Derek, I want to say thank you very much for your time today, gentlemen. It's been a great tour at Palladium One Mining. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We'll be watching. Thanks for your time and wish everyone a good day. All the best.